Chair, can you come here and help me, please?
Good evening, Chatham. Welcome to the April 29, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. I don't see anybody so noted. I assume that C hand up is not a notification, so I'll proceed. Pursuant to Governor Haley's March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203386491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast, ensemble cast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business is establishing a quorum. Mr. Nacastro.
Present.
Mr. Shell is present. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
And Mr. Matters.
Present.
We have a quorum. Very quickly, I'll just summarize. We have on the agenda this evening, two sets of minutes. Public announcements and agenda item requests, public comments on business agenda. Business agenda that consists of, I'm going to say, that looks like about 10 or 11 items. I'll go through those when we get to the business agenda. And with that, I'll take a motion on the March 25, 2025 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And a motion on the April 15 minutes?
Did you say aye?
So moved.
Aye.
You have to get a vote from.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Oh, did I miss you?
You called Dean twice.
I got two votes.
Dean voted twice, so.
Well, you gave him a proxy, right?
You did. He says aye.
I'm trying to get through it in a hurry here, sorry. On the March 25, for the record, March 25, Mr. Matters.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we got that down. On the April 15 minutes, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, Mr. Nacastro?
Just on page one, I believe that, and those participating for the town, in front of town included Carolyn McClelland, as chair of the Chatham Housing Partnership. That should be added.
Good catch.
Good get.
Yep, good catch.
That's it.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
We have the minutes. Public announcements and agenda item requests. I'm going to turn it over to the town manager. We have some awards to give.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am going to go over to the podium to recognize a Team Chatham member, Alexis Weglars, for our first Lighthouse Award. We can share here. So I would like to take this opportunity to recognize one of the members of Team Chatham who went above and beyond her duties. On Friday, April 18, 2025, Alexis Weglars, our department coordinator for the Council on Aging, was driving home from work and spotted one of the Writers Cove Respite participants walking alone down Queen Anne Road. Her instincts led her to call Joe Fennell, our Writers Cove Respite director, to see if this person should be out walking alone. After confirming that the participant should not be walking alone, Alexis guided the participant safely into her car while Joe called to notify the caregiver and directed them to where Alexis was waiting. The participant was reunited with her caregiver, and due to the actions of Alexis, a potential crisis was averted. Because of her actions, I'd like to present Alexis Weglars with our first Lighthouse Award for guiding others with compassion, clarity, and service in support of our community. We are grateful to have such a thoughtful member of Team Chatham who used her training and acted quickly to ensure the safety of one of our citizens. A special thanks also goes to Joe Fennell for assisting Alexis in coming back to the office when she was at Stop &amp; Shop and contacting the caregiver. So thank you, Alexis, and thank you, Joe. And the certificate reads that the town of Chatham presents a Lighthouse Award to Alexis Weglars, guiding others with compassion, clarity, and service in support of our community, and it's signed by myself as well as Michael Shell, the chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill, and thank you, Alexis. That's a phenomenal story. It's one for the ages. Thanks very much. I'm going to move under the heading of public announcements, I'm going to move our Cape and Islands District Attorney, Rob Galliboy, up into the public announcements territory and invite him to give his update. Is this your second annual update or third, maybe?
Third, sir.
Third?
Third, yes. Tempest Fugit. Tempest Fugit.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Permission to approach to hand out my annual report?
Please, Mr. Fisher.
Trying to adhere to my promise my first year that going forward, we would produce an annual report, and that is our January, excuse me, 2025 annual report. So again, I really appreciate this time, and I noticed you have quite a full agenda, so I'll keep my remarks to under 10 minutes and certainly answer any questions that you might have. There are five areas that I just wanted to talk about a little bit to bring you up to speed about what our office has been doing in the past year. So recently, I'd say within the past five or six weeks, we launched a new program called CERT. It's the Child Emergency Response Team. And what it is, it's a collaborative effort between our office and the Department of Children and Families, Children's Cove, where we conduct forensic interviews of children, and our law enforcement partners. And essentially, this collaboration was formed so we could respond as a team as quickly as possible to fully and thoroughly investigate a matter when our most vulnerable victims, our children, are either physically or sexually assaulted, as well as be able to try to draw upon the resources that this victim and their family might need. It is led by the chief of our Children Protection Unit, Courtney Scholies, and she's had two trainings now for this new CERT program. Each training had over 60 attendees. So we're feeling pretty good that it's off to a really good start. I did also want to mention a little bit about human trafficking. I did talk to you all last year about human trafficking. At that time, I mentioned how we were fortunate enough to receive some grant funds to conduct some trainings, a total of four, across Cape Cod, Nantucket, and Martha's Vineyard for those working in law enforcement, the hospitality industry, and the transportation industry. So after last year, we felt that we could present with credibility to the Office of Grand Research, the providers of the money, saying we were going to ask for another $100,000. And this time, we wanted to run a statewide conference, if you will, for law enforcement, hospitality, transportation, as well as those folks working in the secondary education fields. They granted us that money, and just about two weeks ago now, we wrapped up our two-day conference in Hyannis. We had 38 presenters from all across the country, included local law enforcement personnel, state police, FBI. The U.S. Attorney's Office sent down a team of five representatives to present, and we had over 200 attendees, again, from all across the state, including folks from the offices of grants and research came down to check out basically how we did, and they were really complimentary after the second day. So we're feeling pretty good about it. We're kind of sitting back now, trying to figure out what we might want to do in the following year. There's some brief conversation of maybe trying to host a national conference right here on the Cape, but we'll keep you all advised if that's a path that we choose to go down. I wanted to take a moment to talk about our efforts regarding fentanyl. You might remember, when I came before you the very first time, in the spring of 2023, I instituted a new policy. Anytime someone was charged with trafficking in fentanyl, those are your business dealers, if you will. Those are the ones that are pushing the poison for profit. Our office was going to seek to hold them without any bail. There's a very powerful statute known as the Dangerousness Statute, and as you might imagine, they're in the business, so they prepare themselves for that rainy day, should they ever get busted, and prepare, you know, they build up that bank account to bail out and essentially go back to their trade until their case is over. Under this Dangerousness Statute, we get to hold them from the very outset, their very first court appearance during the pendency of their case. The judges bought in to these requests, and they were, all the judges, District Court and Superior Court, were holding them without bail. So now we have some data that we can kind of look at to see if it, in fact, has been working. After year 2023, the data indicated that the non-fatal overdoses were down 10% across the district, and the fatal overdoses were down 7%, okay? Then we've got the 2024 data. 2024 numbers were, non-fadals were down 25% from 2023, and fadals were down 35% from 2023. So while I can't stand here and draw the direct correlation, I think we can draw a reasonable inference that this policy of holding the, those in the business, so to speak, from jump seems to be having a positive impact. I also wanted to talk a little bit about some grant funds that we recently came into. Many of you might be aware that Cape Cod Healthcare recently announced, and they opened a brand-new tower, they're referring to it as, for cancer treatment. And this literally started at a local restaurant to where I lived with notes on a napkin, one I'm about to share with you. Early last summer in 2024, I'm at said restaurant, and the CEO of Cape Cod Healthcare happens to live near me, and we happen to go to the same restaurant, as well as one of his senior vice presidents. So I had learned, just before that chance meeting at the restaurant, that the hospital had a big pot of money that they needed to invest in various stakeholders across the community to get the permits to put up said tower. So there I was with them, literally by our side, scratching out a few notes about how we, as a DA's office, might be able to apply for some of those funds. That napkin eventually led to a 10-page, single-spaced proposal that we put before them, led to a couple meetings, then they brought in the Department of Public Health, a few meetings with the Department of Public Health, back to having more meetings with Cape Cod Healthcare. And about a month and a half ago, they announced that we were successful, and we were going to be awarded $1 million for working in the area substance use disorder. And specifically, what we're looking to do, there's a database known as SIMS, I believe the chief is aware of it. It's Critical Incident Management Systems. And what it is, is if someone has an overdose experience, the police officer who responds goes back to the department and enters the data into this SIMS database. For hypothetical, and I'm not trying to pick on any towns, if an individual from Hanover, Massachusetts, came down to Hyannis and experienced an overdose matter, the officer would go back, put that information in the computer, and where that person's from in Hanover, they would be notified almost in real time, if you will, of the experience of that, one of their particular residents. So like anything else, it's a little bit of a challenge trying to keep the data flowing into the database to kind of keep it up and running. So these funds are going to allow us to try to kind of rejuvenate the efforts going into keeping the database going. We're going to be able to hire a full-time employee to work with all of our area police departments, and we hope to expand it in two ways. Right now, 14 out of the 15 Cape Cod towns participate in this SIMS program, including Chatham. We hope to bring this database now to Martha's Vineyard, where we have six police departments in Nantucket. We're also hopeful to expand the nature of collecting the data and how it's used. We see opportunities here to try to utilize interpretive services. We see opportunities here to perhaps bring in housing options, and we see some opportunities here perhaps to expand to wellness issues. So we're really excited to engage in this contract, if you will, with Cape Cod Healthcare. The way it's broken up is $250,000 over the course of four years, so I'm looking forward to coming back here next year to kind of explain to you how year one went. The last topic I wanted to mention is in the area of elder fraud. Every single month, the detectives across the Cape gather in Howard for a detectives' meeting. And essentially, it's a big roundtable. They kind of go around and talk about what's going on in their given towns to see if they can perhaps help each other out on whatever might be the issue at the time. And I try to get to these meetings as often as possible. For a long time, a lot of the conversations surrounded, you know, B and Es into cars, or into seasonal homes, or unoccupied homes. And then, early last summer, I noticed something. Literally, every single town would talk about elder fraud all the way around the table, month after month after month. So in the fall of 2024, I said, can you please get me some data? I asked for data for a year of 2023 and then year-to-date 2024, which was, I think, October in 2024. I happen to know the Barnstable numbers off the top of my head. Over that timeframe, they had 397 calls for elder fraud, just in the town of Barnstable. Of those 397 calls, 257 made its way into a formal report. That's the only, the resources that they had, they could do 257 cases. Of that, they only charged in 13 cases, or roughly 5%. And that 5% is kind of representative across my district, Barnstable County, Nantucket, and Dukes County. So we got together as an office, put together a proposal. We're trying to get some additional funding from the legislature to hire a couple forensic examiners, and we're thinking of, you know, CPAs that are on the back end of their career, they've been in prior practice, they made their money, and now they want to engage in some public service. We want to use some funds to hire some prosecutors, of course, to prosecute the cases and to get a couple additional victim-witness assistance to work with all of the victims. The total package comes in around $580,000. The overwhelming majority of our Cape delegation signed off on this particular petition and submitted a letter for us to A&amp;F. So we are continuing to work on those efforts, literally as I'm talking to you right now. I have 20 COAs in my district. We are asking each of them to write a letter of support on our efforts. We, literally as I'm talking to you right now, are working with one of the larger financial institutions on the Cape, and they are indicating that they're going to get behind our efforts and offer some letters of support as well. And we're going to be approaching, as you might imagine, elder services and the Cape's chiefs to see if they'll get behind the efforts as well. So those are the areas that I wanted to touch upon. I certainly stand ready to answer any questions, but I am sensitive to the time that you have for the agenda.
Any burning questions here on the board?
I just have a comment, Mike, and Rob, what a great summary, fascinating issues you're dealing with and you're addressing. You really are doing a great job as a DA. Really, it's really fun to see you and to hear you. Very familiar with, you know, fentanyl poisoning, I call it, both personally and professionally in my background. It's wonderful to hear of the relationship with Cape Cod Healthcare. That's one of my alma maters, so it's just really cool what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
What the community is doing, so.
Yes, yes.
I applaud your efforts, and please keep them up. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Amen. Thanks very much. Really terrific stuff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Enjoy your meeting.
Thanks very much. See ya. Okay, any other public announcements from the board or agenda requests? Dean?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a request that we take a look at where we are in the quarterly review we're supposed to be doing of executive session minutes. I know we did a whole bunch of them. I don't know if there are any pending where the meetings have been closed out, but we should make sure we follow up on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else? Any, excuse me, from the public here in the room? I don't see anybody. I see somebody has their hand up, but I think that's just a state of status.
Ms. Gibbs? I'm sorry, so Carol has their hand up, and then Elaine Gibbs.
And I see Ms. Gibbs, so we'll go to Ms. Gibbs. I think Carol maybe is stuck on hand up. Ms. Gibbs?
No, I believe Carol Gordon is on to speak first.
Oh, well, she's had her hand up through the entire meeting. She's welcome to speak ahead of you if she likes.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. I just wanted to make sure I had got my hand in there. May I speak now?
You may indeed.
Okay, thank you. Basically, I'd quickly like to address the use of the town seal and property for political gain. I had a question. I noticed this in one of the political ads this week, and I contacted our town manager's office, and she had sent me a link so that I could see how the town seal could be used. I really think that, when I looked at this, it did tell me that the town manager does enforce the use of the seal. And it's also, I found, by doing some more research, it violates Mass. General Law 268, Section 35, as an unauthorized use of the town seal. Now, if it was authorized for this particular use, then I feel it should have been made available to all the select board candidates. And I'm pretty sure the person who would authorize it would be our town manager. And I, you can, I think you can see that by using the town seal, it could be misconstrued as the town supporting the two candidates that used the seal in their ad. So I don't know if you'd like to address this now or put it on the agenda for next week, but I feel it should be talked about before town meeting.
Thank you. I don't, I'm certainly not prepared to talk about it at this point, so we can put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, so it'll be on next week, and we can talk about some more and about, also about using town property for political gain?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate being put on.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbs?
Thank you. Yes, I have three agenda item requests. One is to have Eversource come back. Last week, we lost power. 4,400 homes were without power. Their map was not being updated. After I reported three properties, it still showed less than five downtown. It was only after, you know, several hours that we realized it was massive. I spoke to them, and they said it was from equipment damage. That's as much as information we had. I don't think we should have to depend on texting on social media each other when the power goes out to find out how widespread it is and what the status is. None of the town's social media sites posted anything about it, nor do we get a robocall. There should be a town point person updating social media with the location clause and restoration time. The hurricane season's only months away, and winter is right after that, and I don't see any improvement by Eversource as to their infrastructure or their communications. So I think if someone on town staff is identified to be responsible for updating social media so that, again, we don't have to literally contact our neighbors to find out the status, it would be appreciated. The second one is, I would echo the request by Ms. Gordon for next week, as it's time-sensitive about using the town seal on social media sites, using town property for gatherings, going to town meetings in town meeting rooms, asking for endorsement signatures, and what is and is not a violation. I think when the town seal is used, it indicates that certain people are, in fact, endorsed by the town, and I think that's inappropriate. Maybe it's not, but I believe it is. And the third item that I would like to have a future agenda item on is the town manager evaluation process, since there's nothing in the package tonight to be able to comment on during the agenda request, to have a more formalized process and procedure put back in place. It was not on the weekly upcoming agenda of the last ones that it was going to be today, so we only found out Friday night. If we go back to May of 2021, the agenda packet had the evaluation forms and the six criteria with subcategories for ratings one through four in each category. In 2022, there was nothing in the packet, a four-page summary by the chairman that only appeared in the minutes after. In 2023, nothing was in the packet, only a paragraph in the minutes, again, added later. And in 2024, the same thing, just a short paragraph. Today, we have nothing to go on. I don't recall any select board meeting where a discussion and/or decision was made to change the process, and I think it's important that one should be studied and come up with to include public participation. I think this is an indication of less and less transparency in the process. I think it's really important that the roles and responsibilities of the town manager versus select board are out there so that we can see it. It's important for the public to know. So those are my comments for now. I have some on the agenda items coming up, but I'll hold those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Well, before we, I'll just quickly summarize what's on the business agenda. We have a committee update from the Energy and Climate Action Committee, from Chairman Wertschafter. We have a request for use of town roads. We have a one-day entertainment license, use of town property, outdoor display, and sale of goods on town property, et cetera, et cetera, for the fifth annual Witches on the Water fundraising at Oyster Pond Beach. We have a request to consider acceptance of a donation of a permanent sign, benches and table at the Marconi RCA Conservation Trail. We have a water conservation recommendation from the Director of Public Works. We have a Chatham Sewer Assistance Grant Program Policy First Read. We have a committee appointment to the Airport Commission to be considered. We have the Town Manager's Monthly Report for month of March, and we have the Town Manager's Annual Evaluation. And with that, I'll accept public comments on the business agenda. Ms. Gibbs?
That was quick. Yes, I'd like to speak to the water conservation recommendation. I think that option one is unnecessarily complicated for people to even attempt to follow, so option two, if you're going to do it, I think would make more sense. I would also like confirmation, because again, I've looked at the chart, the colored chart, and it's still difficult, but it says public, it says public water. So I assume that means these do not apply to people who put in irrigation or wells or have wells for their water, and so I'd like that confirmed. And then I would also like confirmed that the boatyards are prohibited from using water to wash down boats during the season, and that water is not available to boaters to do that. Again, I think it's a matter of equity that if we cannot...
cannot wash our patios, our furniture, our siding, our cars, that the same should apply to the boating community, particularly when many of them don't even live in Chatham, and so they'd be using our water. So hopefully, that will occur. And then, my final comment has to do with the appointment of an airport commissioner. This appointment should be postponed until after town meeting, which is only two weeks away, and the election. It's for either a one-year term or a three-year terms. The airport issues have become a contentious political issue with the citizen petition, legal opinions from this board, and the Airport Commission against the petitioners, and ads taken out on both sides. The resignation of a commissioner was less than three weeks ago, and only one interview has occurred for that position. I think that has to be a record on interviewing and possibly taking a vote. The airport, which is town property, is being used, I think, at times for political reasons, and I would hope that that doesn't continue. The board should not commit to appointing anyone until we know the results of town meeting, the warrant articles, and the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody else, either here in the room or online? With that, I will proceed to the first, what is now the first item, the committee report from the Energy and Climate Action Committee, Mr. Wertschafter, and I see Ms. Griskam is also here. But I guess you're going to stay where you are. Okay. Bob, go ahead. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Bob Wertschafter. I'm Chair of the Climate Action, Energy and Climate Action Committee. We have two topics tonight. One is to update the select board on our activity for the last year, and then we have a request to change, to reword our charge. It's a little wordy, and we've come up with a nice concise account of what we do. So let me begin. There's five areas of activity that we participated in over the last year. You can read them all there. I'm not going to read them now, because I'm going to be talking about each of them individually. The first one of these is anticipating and mitigating climate change impacts. For this and every other of these activities, one of these activities, our primary responsibility is to work with the town as an advisory committee. And our purpose in this case is to increase Chatham's resilience and to help provide some prediction of what impacts may be coming, and make sure that people in the, in the town are aware of those risks and have maybe developed some strategies that we want to work with down on. So in 2024, we assisted in, in the low-lying road study, and we instituted a salt marsh study that I'll be talking about in a little bit. Over the next year and a half, two years, we see ourselves being involved in the Chatham Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, Open Space Plan, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, and the South Coastal Harbor Plan, among other things that will crop up over the year. The most important of our activities as a committee has focused on the salt marshes, as I've explained in previous talks to you. That is where we see the largest risks to, to Chatham as, as we see it. So we have instituted, last year, we requested and got money for a study that looked at Forest Beach, Cockle Cove, Bucks Creek, and Oyster River. There's been a lot of information, data collection, over the last year to get all of the kind of statistical information. I'm not the one to tell you every detail of what we're collecting, but it, it will be used to look at the current conditions of the marshes and to help predict where the future might be under certain scenarios of sea level rise. We also will have some recommendations on how we can best preserve those marshes and protect them from floods. We expect to come back to you in the next month and a half, I would say two months, to give you the update on our first, on that study and to present to you that study. We've also put together a new study to cover the other marshes that have not been studied yet, to keep collecting this data. It's really important that we get this data over time, that we know what we have now, so that as the conditions change, we're able to see how, how the marshes are changing under those circumstances. So this is important data that the town uses. The second area of study is to reduce energy usage and carbon emissions. Again, we work with the town staff and other committees and the public to conserve energy, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and promote renewable energy. I'm on the Cape and Vineyard Cooperative as their treasurer, so we're monitoring those solar projects and looking for new solar projects with the town. We've monitored the town energy projects through Cape Light Compact. We've encouraged the purchase of town electric vehicles, and I'm so happy to say we now have a charging stations in town at the Eldridge Garage that are up and running, and you can go and charge your car there. And we're, we've also become involved in looking at ways to reduce the amount of waste and the cost of waste across the town. We, it has been something that has concerned a number of the members of my committee, and it may be one of those where we found other, other groups within the town that are able to handle that and may not continue to do that, but it is of interest to us. So if it's not being covered elsewhere, we will continue to look at it. Our third area is regulating a sustainable environment. Again, working with staff to, to look at, identify regulations and bylaw changes needed. We have advised the town on the stretch and specialized codes, and we want to, and come to you in the near future, the next, the next step for Chatham may be to become a climate leader community. It would make a lot of state funding available to us if we did. The biggest step in that would be that the town would have to adopt the Specialized Energy Code. We also are worked with the town staff in the EV charging policy, and in looking and working with the town to figure out where the best places for citing EV chargers. We work with the Cape Cod Commission, Chatham Conservation Commission, and others, Planning Board, to work on coastal floodplain bylaw and stormwater management regulation. And we're also looking at some new solutions that are going to come down in the next year. Biggest of those is the thin-layer disposition that we hope, which is now easier to do when we're going to record it, look at how it's being done elsewhere, to make some recommendations to you. One of our biggest jobs is educating residents and visitors. We have lots of different ways that is, we work with that. We work with a whole bunch of different groups that are mentioned here. We're working with the, we're working with the town and the Chatham Climate Action Network to develop a climate action plan and a calendar and a list of all the actions that have been taken by the town that have some effect on, on our climate and/or our ability to deal with climate. There, we're also supporting the CCAN. They're planning an event in June for education, and our committee is actively going to support that work. We work with the town community director. We've completely overhauled the website, and we're working to provide more information to her on, on main sheet. I have one for next week on how you get your name on the Eversource outage list, so they send you the information to your webs, to your email and to your phone. I knew exactly when the outage was. I knew how many people are out, so I think that's a bit of information that we need to get to the town.
Excuse me, Bob. I just like to ask a question about that. We get that information as well automatically, both by email and on cell phones. I'm not aware that we ever put our name on a list. Do you, do you know whether you have to put your name on a list in order to get that information, or they somehow send it to all their customers that they have that information for?
Yeah, that's the, that, I think that's the bigger issue, is that they don't have everybody's information. Not everybody's cellphone is known, and then I think you do have to give them permission to send you the, the stuff on your cellphone.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to work, we've worked on, again, a couple other challenges. Another big one that I keep talking about is how do we get our, our non-residents to participate in Mass Save? We are initiating a survey that we're going to, that the CCAN is going to launch on this week or next week, and may, to try and get some more feedback on that from, from households. Finally, we've, we're working, we, we would like you to change the charge. This is our charge. It's wordy. It's mostly focused on energy conservation, which we do do, but there is so much more. I don't even want you to read that one. I want you to look at this very simple one here that is, that says everything that we would like it to do in three sentences, and we, we are requesting that we use this as our charge as, and get rid of the old wordy one. And that's my presentation. But if you could approve this charge, that's, make us all happy. And I'll take questions.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Bob, for that report. I just have a few things, but I think that charge is great. Simplicity is always best. And I applaud the committee for taking on as one of the newer projects, the salt marsh issue. I think that's really important. With respect to the charging stations at the Eldridge Garage, I think it was the committee, perhaps you personally, that came before the Eldridge Garage Committee a few years ago and pitched that to us. So that's, it's nice to see it in fruition. The stretch code, I'm, well, I'll wait to see what you have to say about that. I'm, I'm very skeptical about it, but I will see.
Well, we are, we do, we do have the stretch code. We are, it's already been adopted.
The special, I guess, I mean the
You're talking about the specialized.
Specialized code, I'm sorry. Let's see what you, what you have, come up with.
Well, I, I'm very much for it, but I, I have actually asked my committee to wait and give builders and everyone a little bit of time to adopt to the, to the new stretch code. There isn't an awful lot of new construction activity in town, so it isn't, it isn't something we have to rush to do. There are some renovation, large renovations and commercial properties that would be affected more by the specialized code than the stretch code, but mostly, the specialized code just, its major differences are that all the new building would have to be ready to be solar and ready to be all-electric. So you would have the wiring for that without having to actually have to do it.
Okay.
Unless you build a 4,000-square-foot house, in which case you would actually have to do it. So I, I'm just, I'm ready to, to start talking to you folks about it. I think the reason we should start talking is because to become a community leader, community would open us, allow us to, to get money, much, I believe it's at least as much money as we got when we became a Green Communities Act. So I think that's something we should not turn down.
Well, we'll, we'll keep an open mind on it and see what you come up with. My fourth and final thing is, I've had several communications from, from one individual, admittedly, on, on a topic, and I wondered if your committee had looked at it. It has to do with the use of gas-powered leaf blowers and the noise, the noise pollution and the environmental consideration. Has anyone brought, I suggested that this individual bring it to your attention.
Well, we, we have worked with the, with the, the town, the building, whoever it is
Landscaping?
To adopt electric leaf and, and garden equipment, and they bought some. And so, so that's our fir, that's, that's what we've done so far. For the town, I don't think we have the, the power to, to ban that, those, that equipment, but again, we should emphasize that Mass Save does give rebates for people who buy electric garden equipment, and that this is a good time to do that, because that won't be available for, for much longer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not proposing a ban. I just wanted to introduce the, the issue.
Yeah, it's been on our, on our radar for, for several years, trying to get the larger commercial contractors to, to move to electric and, and I've talked to a lot, a number of them about what expenses would be and how, how that would work, so.
Yeah, well, any, any, any education you can, that your committee can provide, I think would be valuable to, especially to the small solo landscapers who would have to incur a lot of expense if they had to shift over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Bob. Jeff?
Thank you, Mike. Bob, excellent report. Once again, I like the three-sentence charge. It's simple, straightforward, and really summarizes what you guys are all about. Couple stupid questions, but thin-layer disposition, what is that?
It, deposition.
It says disposition, but
It did, it, we never changed the word, spelling? Okay, that was my mistake.
So it's a thin-layer, a deposit.
I could ask Sarah to come up here and give you a much better explanation.
It's about deposits.
But you're allowed to put, there is less restriction on the adding sand to a salt marsh to raise it up so that it isn't underwater anymore. So apparently, the state environmental regulators are, have more clearly defined what can be done, and we, we should be looking at what those things are.
So your reports be the spring, we're going to, well, next spring or whatever, we're going to?
Well, we
Salt marshes coming, coming soon, or?
You want to talk, Bob?
Introduce yourself. Hi, Sarah Griskam, on the Energy and Climate Action Committee. Thin-layer deposition is really popular down south, where they have these marshes that are subsiding quite fast. And so it's been clear that raising them with a small amount of sand or sediment regularly allows the marsh to grow, and it'll just grow right through that deposition, that thin layer. So that's what it is. We're not, we're not there yet in Massachusetts, so, but they're, they're bringing it forward.
Just a couple of comments. Mass Save, I would, I would think there's, there could be a mass emailing or whatever for the folks that are non-residents here and to make them aware of Mass Save. It's a wonderful program, and we should, you know, get the word out as best we can. And then I was so impressed with the meeting that we had with the Association for, for the Preservation of Cape Cod, that, for Earth Day, Earth Week. It was, he was extremely, Andrew Gottlieb was extremely impressive. And I know he's been around a long time. It's just I haven't been introduced to him, I guess, as much as I perhaps should have, but what a wonderful resource, and he, he's, he's got it down. And I'd love to have him come to Chatham in a more formal way at some point, so I just, I hope you guys interface with him and, and work with him, because I really was really impressed with this work, yeah. You guys are doing a great job. Love what you do. Thanks.
Shereen?
Thanks. Bob, thank you for the report. I am really, really psyched to hear about the salt marsh stuff. I just think this is really important work for such a fragile sandbar as we are. The idea that you're providing content for social, you know, for our social media to the public, that is really important. I really appreciate the public, that is really important, I really appreciate that, I I hope more committees would would take note of that and provide provide that. Charge looks great. I just, I I'm just very happy that your committee is working very hard for 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 the issues that we're facing here, I think, you know, at some point, we're gonna be in in a more deeper problem than we are, and this is, you know, if we are out of the game. The special energy code, I I'd love to hear more about that, you know, and I'd also like, this might be something the economic development would take a look at to see what that impact could be, maybe to the community in a broader picture, see if we have to balance anything going forward. And just a note to Jeff, that Kristin Andes works for APCC as well, so, I mean, I think it would be a nice fit for for them to come come visit us as well. Thank you for your good work.
Basically, I appreciate the presentation, and I guess my only two cents is, simple, easy, proposed, new charge is crisp and clear and no issues whatsoever, so.
Yeah, I the, I'm all for the new charge, great report, thank you very much for that. Let me just say that I hope you will be able to accomplish the things that you have on your plate, you have a tremendously challenging mission here, which is two things, one, a very complicated and difficult set of problems, and two, you're probably the only people, you're a very limited number of people who actually understand most all of it, so the education piece is huge as well. And, you know, I'm speaking for myself, among other things, but I I I would express a hope that we can speed up the process of installing EV chargers wherever they're appropriate. We've got to start, but it's just a start, so.
Yes.
Those are my comments.
Great.
Michael, do we need a vote on the charge, or?
Uh, yeah, we probably do.
I moved, I moved to approve the charge.
Second.
Uh, we'll give that one to Shereen. All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Now, we have a request for a series of approvals, licenses, use of town property, et cetera, and this is from the Witches on the Water. Sorry?
Short and Sweet.
Short and Swi, oh, sorry, I have the wrong piece in front of me here. Short and Sweet is next.
Hello.
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 Thanks.
This is Ian McBride, owner of Short and Sweet.
Hi, if you could speak up just a little bit, you're a bit faded.
Sorry about that, how about that?
There you go, that's good, thank you.
All right, sorry, yeah, this is Ian McBride, the owner of Short and Sweet Ice Cream. We are hoping to host a charity fun run in June to benefit Monomoy's track and running And we would need just use of crossing Sam Rider Road.
Yeah, we we have a staff memo that I think outlines that, any questions from the board? Otherwise, I take the motion.
They were before the parking rack, and it's, this is very straightforward, this is almost a little bit, so, yeah, so I I I move to approve the use of the town roads for the Short and Sweet 5K charity fun run on Saturday, June 14, 2025, at 8:00 AM, as presented by, well, Ian, not Becky.
Sorry.
Second.
On a flight back to California.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now we have, I'm sorry?
I just said thank you.
Oh, you said, oh, thanks very much, you're you're, have a good one.
You too.
Now, now we have the series of proposals from the the Witches on the Water fundraising.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Select Board, so we're back again, this is our fifth year, I couldn't have believed that we would be where we are today. We have raised just under $110,000 for our recipients over these last four years. So this is our fifth annual costume paddle, pretty much a mirror image of last year, we've gone to Parks and Recs already, as you see, I went to the town clerk this morning for our raffle permit, and this year's beneficiary is NAMI of the Cape Cod, of Cape Cod and the Islands, which NAMI stands for, the National Alliance on Mental Health, Mental Illness, it's an amazing organization, providing free-of-charge services to individuals with mental illness, their family and friends, it's just a terrific organization, we're thrilled to have them as our recipient this year. So we're looking to, again, mirror image of last year, we had three food trucks, we had a wonderful, successful event with a live band and a disc jockey, it was absolutely terrific, and we just, we're hoping to do it again this year on Saturday, October 4.
Questions?
I I think this is a wonderful event, and, you know, it just brings such community goodwill together, so I'm going to, I'll make the motion, I guess.
We actually, we have a series of motions, but
Then why don't we?
I I do wanna say same thing, I I, it's terrific, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'll do the first one, I guess, the use of town property, I move to grant the use of town property to Witches on the Water for the fifth annual fundraising costume sup paddle on Saturday, October 4, 2025, from 11:00 to 6:00 PM at Oyster Pond in the parking lot.
May I just ask, though, real quick, would you also approve, if the rain date would be the next day, should something go awry on Saturday?
I think we can do the
You wanna do, you wanna do them all at once?
Yeah.
Or three of them all at once?
All right, I'll do them, with an alternative date of October 5. I also move us to grant a special one-day entertainment license to Witches on the Water for amplified live and recorded music on Saturday, October 4, 2025, with the alternate date of October 5, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Oyster Pond and Parking Lot. Also move to grant permission for outdoor display of and sale of goods on town property to Witches on the Water on Saturday, October 4, 2025, with an alternative date of October 5, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Oyster Pond Beach and Parking Lot. I also grant, move to grant permission for three food trucks contracted by Witches on the Water to vend at Oyster Pond on Saturday, October 5, 2025, with an alternative date of October 5, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, food trucks must depart no later than 6:00 PM, and obviously, a rain date of Sunday, October 5, 2025, will be permitted for all the above if necessary.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, have a nice evening.
Same to you, thank you. Okay, next case is acceptance of a donation of a permanent bench, permanent signed benches and table, Mr. Berman, welcome.
Hello, Greg Berman.
Hello.
Director of Natural Resources. So this is, in part, the consideration of acceptance of this donation, but also kind of an announcement that after many years, this was a CPC article of 2019, we are finally kind of wrapping up the last touches of this particular area. Sorry, so this is right off of Riders Cove Landing, and you can see the Marconi area, the powerhouse down there. This was acquired back in 1999, there's been restoration occurring, the work has been supplemented by the AmeriCorps program, it's come out multiple seasons and done really tremendous work out there, but now there is kind of an an easy loop trail heading out and around with some lovely views of the water, those two benches that you can see kind of along the the water side of the trail, and then the picnic table is kind of on that white rectangle, that's an existing concrete pad out there, the U are here, that's actually where the kiosk would be located, and this particular map is part of one side of the kiosk. This is the kind of history of the area, this was provided in your packet, showing the the two historic towers on the site and a little bit of the background. On the other side, you really get into more of the conservation and natural resources of the area. This is where that map that I had showed before is, and this does show, hopefully, the re-located tower position on this map that'll be coming within the next year. So I don't wanna get too much into the weeds on this, but if the Select Board is willing, we do have two instigators who have been involved with this for a long time, Michelle Maloney-Kitts and Barbara Cottonham, if you're willing to hear their brief background about it, I think they'd be very
Sure.
Thank you, I'll be very quick, but as some of you know, this project has been at least
I'm sorry, Michelle, can you just
Oh.
Introduce yourself, if you wouldn't mind.
Sorry, I'm Michelle Maloney-Kitts, I live in the area and have been working with Barb Cottonham for the last, for me, let's say, 10 years, and for Barb, it's been 20 on this project, so we're just ecstatic to be here, and I just wanna say a few words that this project really does reflect the very best of what a partnership and a commitment to a vision can deliver. There was, it was a completely run overrun with invasive area, you could not even walk there, and there are these magnificent water views over Riders Cove, and an incredible opportunity to really preserve and protect an extremely historic piece of land, as well as one of, a very beautiful spot that offers a great deal. So I just wanna say that none of this would ever have been possible without the persistence of Barb Cottonham, and she totally deserves, beyond the lighthouse prize, let's say, for her vision, and this shows not only what people can do together, but also the power of persistence, because it would have never happened without that. Just quick shout-outs, first of all, to you, this is the second time we've met with you, several of you walked with us in the early days when we were trying to put the trails down to basically protect it from becoming the parking lot that several people had previously proposed. Also, of course, the town has been extraordinarily helpful, Dr. Bob has been an ally of this project all along, Paul and Keenan, we couldn't have done it without them in the Natural Resources Department, and recently Greg has become our part of the fan club, so that's really good. Marconi has been very involved, Bob Fishback, the president, Dick Cracer before him, Carolyn Craigan, Edie Crowell, these signs were kind of like negotiating a NATO treaty, you have no idea what went into trying to get all of this organized. AmeriCorps has been invaluable to us in this site and moving forward, it is a big concern moving forward, if they are not going to be here anymore to help us, we will have to find an alternative solution. The Chatham-Harwich Woodworkers made the benches for us, and the friends of Riders Cove, Marconi Triangle, which is a group of people that Barb put together, was able to raise over $11,000 to provide a match for the CCP funding that we were able to get. And then, of course, we had all the commitment of the committees along the way to get us the funding, the town of Chatham that voted for it multiple times. So anyway, I'm gonna leave it with that, and it just proves that you don't have to pave paradise and put in a parking lot, you can have a great alternative, so, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
And if you have any questions for myself, or for Michelle or Barb?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just have a comment, Barb, Michelle, when you walked up and I saw Barb, it is a testimony to perseverance, it really is, Barb's been at this for a while, it's beautiful, and you guys did a great job, thank you so much.
Thank you. Just one last thing, we do hope to have an opening possibly in June, it's National History, it's History Month, and we think there'd be a good link, and we could really use it as an opportunity, it's incredible place, I encourage you to go and sit in those beautiful benches.
We should have a ribbon cutting.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks very much, very inspiring, particularly the 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 long struggle.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to recommend the Select Board approve the donation of benches, a picnic table, a permanent sign, and other site enhancement valued at approximately $11,340 at the Marconi RCA Conservation Trail.
Second, all those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Failey, I think, is next with a water conservation recommendation. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. So this is a continuation of our discussion a couple of weeks ago about water conservation recommendations. So as you know, Chatham gets its potable water from a sole sole-source aquifer, the Monomoy Lands, along with the towns of Harwich, Orleans, and Brewster, who also pull their water from the Monomoy Lands. So we are currently at about a 40% below average, a deficit in the amount of rainfall that we typically see this time of year, and that's been prolonged over the winter months. So for the second month in a row, the Energy and Environmental Affairs Office have declared Massachusetts or Cape Cod at a Level 2 significant drought. As temperatures continue to warm and vegetation starts to draw more groundwater, the likelihood of the groundwater being recharged is gonna be minimized. So what I have here is, the discussion piece is, at the April 14 meeting, the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, they recommended that the water conservation level should be at a Level 1, even though Massachusetts declares Chatham and all of Cape Cod at a Level 2, they felt that a Level 1 may be more appropriate because the pumping hours in April are still quite a bit lower. I know in their matrix, it calls out much higher hours, but as you can see in this, we don't typically hit the low-level alarm this time of year, and our pumping hours in in April are 4 to 10 hours per day, and in May, they're 4 to 12 hours per day. The water conservation restrictions recommended by the Environmental Affairs Office, which is at the bottom of this slide, closely matches the Level 2 conditions in the Chatham Water and Sewer Advisory Committee Decision Matrix. So you can see, really, the first bullet on the bottom of the page is what the EEA's office recommends, all non-essential outdoor water uses are banned. That that, to me, is pretty restrictive. But if we look at some of the groundwater levels, this is a kind of a repeat of the slide that I showed at my at my monthly report, except this has been updated with the chart of last year, of last week, I drew the red line across to show where we are compared to the previous five years. I checked this line again today, and we are still climbing, we're still recharging, and actually, now we're above the 2021 levels, which is a a good sign, and this is the Chatham USGS well. Brewster, as you know, is more of the bellwether for the Cape, it's also still recharging at a very steep rate, which is a good sign, I think a lot of that is due to Saturday's rainfall that we had, but the depth of the water is not as promising as Chatham's is So recently, the towns of Harwich and Orleans have passed outdoor water restrictions that begin May 1, and actually, since I wrote this report, the town of Brewster has also jumped on board. There, both of those, all three of those towns are less stringent than the EEA recommendations and the Level 1 recommendations by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. So Harwich, they recommend two days per week watering, they separate it by odd-numbered houses and even-numbered houses, and that begins again on May 1. There's no mention in their restrictions of vehicles or buildings or boats There's no mention in their restrictions of vehicles or buildings or boats or any of that nature. They keep it very generic. Orleans also mentions two days. They don't specify which two days of the week, but they also specifically call out non-essential outdoor watering, and they define that as no vehicles, buildings, driveways, or sidewalks being allowed. They do not specifically mention boats in that as well, although I would consider a boat a vehicle potentially. So, Brewster, who had just recently enacted theirs, again, beginning May 1st, they have an alternating schedule. Odd number houses on odd days, even number houses on even days between 4:00 to 8:00 a.m. or 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. So, they have the least restrictive of all three towns at this point. So, the Massachusetts Drought Task Force is meeting again on May 7th. So, we'll discuss drought conditions again then. But we really need to take some action to put something in place before then. Again, I just blew up the matrix. On this page, it's a little easier to read. That's the matrix that the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee put together. Their recommendation, again, was a Level 1 mild drought. But again, that recommendation was made before any of the surrounding towns made those recommendations. So, there's a lot to consider and a lot to discuss. With that, I developed really two options for recommendations. And one of those is to align with Level 1 as recommended by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee on April 14th, which would allow waters, sorry, lawns to be irrigated only one day per week. And no, and allowed hand watering on two days per week, but no non-essential watering allowed. Option 2 is similar to, somewhat similar to Orleans and Harwich, where it would allow non-essential watering two days a week in the early morning hours or in the evening hours. And it still does allow some handheld watering, but no watering of vehicles, sidewalks, or buildings. So, I know that's a lot to digest, and I'm happy to go to any other slides. I think if we do pick a restriction, it should be on specific days. Do recommend fines. It'll also allow us to keep track of fines. It'll also allow us to keep track of water usage instead of just allowing people, say in Orleans, two days per week. Which days are they choosing? Is everybody choosing the same days? It really helps us conserve water and target days that we want to have people using water.
I'm happy to answer questions. I know that there'll be many.
Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the Water and Sewer Committee spent a lot of time coming up with this matrix, which is a tool for the Board to use. And I respect their recommendation. I did watch, I wasn't able to attend their meeting in person, but I did watch it subsequently. At the same time, I think I am more inclined toward, to adopting something similar to our surrounding towns, which is a little less restrictive. But we need to, if we're going to do that, define what is non-essential, what is essential. I'm not sure how these other towns define that. I do want to clarify, because the question was asked in the, at the beginning of the meeting, this is only obligatory on, on public water usage, not private. But I do think, as we have in the past, whatever restriction we do come up with, we should encourage those who have private irrigation systems, private wells, to honor these restrictions. The reason I'm a little hesitant to go as far as the Water and Sewer Committee has recommended is that, as you point out, we have May 7th to look forward to when the State Task Force regroups. And I'd like to know what they have to say then before I think we should impose something a little more severe. That's my current thinking, anyway. But I'm flexible on this. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, my only que, I mean, I, you, there were a lot of words that you were speaking around option 2 that I don't see here in the staff memo. And so, I guess I, apart from the question that Dean raises about what is non-essential and what isn't, the, the part that is clear is two days a week, specifically Tuesdays and Thursdays, after 5:00 and before 9:00. What's not clear to me is all the other stuff, the hand watering, the boats, the, you know, the cars, the, all of that other stuff, and how that fits in here.
Right. And it does, it gets to be like an onion, you know. I think towns have kept it generalized, just to wait and see what happens on May 7th. I think there are, there's specific language about if somebody who installed a new lawn or they're irrigating their newly installed bushes, you know, you don't want to sacrifice those. They don't use as much water, especially if you're hand watering. You can control the flow a little bit more. When we look at irrigation systems, we are in the 70 to 80 million gallons per year on the registered irrigation systems in Chatham. That's how much water we use. If we restrict that, that's a tremendous amount of savings. I don't think somebody hand watering their bushes or their, a specific area in their lawn that they're trying to grow grass on is going to make that much of a difference.
Yeah, and I, just to follow up, I was really asking the question, not necessarily inviting a suggestion, that we get down to being very restrictive or very detailed. I, apart from the anticipation of new news from May 7th, the state, it is somewhat early in, it's early in the season. We've had a lot of rain. The, the graphs that you're showing us are not yet trending in, I mean, they're not great, but they're not trending in a, in a direction that causes me anywhere to think in my uninformed thinking that, you know, we're, we better batten down the hatches early because this is going to be a bad summer. So, I guess I wouldn't be inclined to support option 2 with the kind of flexibility that, that, you know, the, I hesitate to use the word, but kind of loosey-goosey definitions around it for the time being, at least until May. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but that's sort of how I was looking at it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I mean, just, I mean, just to be very blunt about it, I mean, we're in a kind of awkward timing position, because, I mean, a lot of people, a lot of people pay irrigation companies to come and turn on their systems. And frankly, they don't know how to operate the system, or they don't engage as much with it. So, all these companies are coming through and turning on systems, and they're going to set them for whatever was, was previously run. And to get that guy to come back may take a couple of weeks, months, whatever. So, we, we just got to accept that, you know, there's going to be a little bit of a transition with whatever position we take. And unless we want to go around finding, you know, quite a few property owners right away, I think we've got to have some flexibility with this. I mean, that's, this is the reality of it.
Yeah. No, I thoroughly agree with you.
So, I would allow some flexibility. Obviously, the May 7th is right around the corner. So, I'm, I'd like to go as flexible as possible at this stage, prepare ourselves for, with a little more data, a little more concrete position. And frankly, this is, you know, less than two weeks, so.
Well, May 7th is next week, isn't it?
Yeah, and I would agree. That does give us a little bit of flexibility. We're going to have better data very soon. And, you know, I think we certainly prepared as a Board to do, to be more draconian if the data says we should, leads us that way. But probably a little earlier right now, so, those are my thoughts.
Just in light of what Corey just said, are we talking about waiting to do anything until next week?
I was, I was speaking more in terms of option 2.
Yeah, no, that's what I thought we were talking about. But if we adopt option 2, there may be a lot of, of irrigation systems that are, you know, sort of on automatic pilot, was what I understood you to be saying, Corey.
It is. I mean, we could, I mean, I could go with, I would go with, I could support option 2, but I just want, I just don't want to be super quick on all this, the fines of penalizing people that, you know, they, they say they, they support option 2 in theory, but they just mechanically can't get their guy to come back. So, I don't want to be hard on people who may, who may be supporting this. I just want to figure out the nuances of not penalizing people who, you know, fine, and option 2 is what we're going to do, that's fine, but, you know, my guy can't come back for another week or two. So, I just want to have a balance somehow.
Shereen?
I think, since, you know, May 7th is around the corner, I would go with option 1 and leave it at that for the week. And I understand we're not going to have, yeah, option 1. The mild drought, yeah.
I'm sorry, the which?
If we're talking about not going with anything, I would go with option 1, just, just because it would be a more caution, cautioned way to, a cautioned approach.
This would be the most strict.
It's more strict.
Yeah, yeah. This is what we're looking.
Right. Option 1 would be one day per week watering. And option 2 would allow for two days per week.
Far more, far more restrictive.
I'm sorry.
We're, there's levels and options.
I was looking at this.
Yeah, that, those are levels.
So, and this is what.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
I apologize. There was a lot of information to try to.
Yeah, well, you know. That's me, too.
And it's all unfolding as we speak.
Yeah. All right. I'll go with what you had said. Yep, got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was going to offer a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we should do something tonight.
Yes.
I do understand the complication that Corey outlined about getting somebody to come back if we tighten the screws a little bit. They also have to pay for a second visit, probably. But, so, I'm going to move that we adopt restrictions as follows on use of public water, that we allow non-essential outdoor use of the water, no more than two days per week before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. Water, and that water, watering by sprinkler or irrigation is allowed on the customer's signed day, only before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. Odd house numbers on Tuesdays and even house numbers on Wednesdays? I'm, I'm sorry, there's two days, right? So, Tuesdays and Thursdays for the odd, odd house numbers. Wednesdays and Fridays? Is Friday's a good day for us?
It doesn't. As long as we can dictate when people are irrigating, I don't think it would matter.
Okay. Even house numbers on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Some of the towns have picked weekend days, which I don't think would work well in our condition.
Yeah, so, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis?
Aye, and thanks for clarifying.
Mr. Dyken?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proposed Chatham Sewer Assistant Grant Program Policy First Read. Jill, is it you or?
I'll introduce it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, with town meeting coming up on May 10th, and the Board has placed Article 23 to fund a sewer assistance program, Kathy and I wanted to put together a draft policy for the Board's first reading to give us some direction, per se, of where we want to go. We've set it up as a grant program, similar in a way to the Dr. Florence Selden Family Support, Preschool Family Support Program, where with that program, the resident actually doesn't get the funds, we pay the vendor directly. And so, in setting up the policy, we wanted to fashion it after the successful Aqua Fund program, where they two paid directly to the vendor. But for this, we would augment that program. So, they would go for the initial review through the Aqua Fund, and depending on what their percentage for their loan payback, that would be the criteria for our policy. So, I want to turn it over to Kathy. She said, she's done all the research for this, and she can provide details.
Thank you. So, as, as Jill mentioned, this was kind of based heavily on using that almost pre-qualification, if you will, of the Aqua Fund to determine ways to provide these grants, these supplemental grants to those in need in town. So, the policy begins with a couple definitions of the Cape Cod Aqua Fund for those who might not be familiar. Again, because the 0% and 2% loans through the Aqua Fund apply only to new sewer connections, we fashioned this policy in a similar manner, that it would only apply to new sewer connections at this time. It goes through kind of the program overview. Eligibility criteria would be that it must be the residential property owner of record, they must be making a new connection to the Chatham sewer system. We're asking for proof of a Cape Cod Aqua Fund loan approval. This was similar to how Orleans had done their grant program as well. Also, in talking with Director Alice Ryan, she had mentioned that that was how other towns were discussing creating a similar program. We wouldn't, we would be the second town kind of officially creating this type of program. So, it seemed, though, that that's what a lot of other towns were leaning towards as well. And then, the grant would only be for expenses related to new sewer connections, for example, excavation, engineering, labor, piping, and materials. And in our, in the presentation the Board received on April 1st, if you recall, engineering costs seem to be kind of one of those front costs, upfront costs, that people need to pay to put deposits down in order to secure engineering. So, the hope is that this would help with that. And at this time, commercial properties and businesses would not be eligible for this program. The grant disbursement, again, if they, if the resident qualified for a 0% Aqua Fund loan, we're recommending with this policy that the grant award would be $2,000. If the resident qualified for the 2% Aqua Fund loan, we're recommending $1,500. Again, in an effort to aid and assist those Chatham residents that are in most need of additional supplemental funds. The payments would be made directly to the contractors and engineers who would be provided, that information would be provided by the applicant, hopefully. And invoices would be sent through the town manager's office, again, similar to how Dr. Selden, the Dr. Selden program is administered. So, that's the policy. I also included the application, just a draft application, very simple information, kind of hitting all of the points outlined in the policy, just to confirm and verify that the applicant has done all of those things. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Shereen.
Just a quick question, Kathy, on the application.
Yes.
I'm confused as to an apartment. And why was that included?
That was included just because the Cape Cod Aqua Fund designated that as well.
Really? Okay.
We can.
Did they define it, what it meant, in any manner?
It wasn't clear, but, because it was in their definition of what a residence was, I put it on there in an abundance of caution. But again, if you'd like it removed and.
No, I don't.
Or simplified, that's fine as well. I don't want to, I, I kind of contemplated that one, because again, like you, I was kind of, what's the difference? And does it matter, really? I think it was more just for tracking purposes, so we could say, okay, we've done this many single-family homes. But again, I'm open to suggestions.
Just, just like a little more clarification as to what it would be. You know, I understand the condominium duplex ownership kind of thing, but I'm kind of confused about the apartment, because that would, probably, an apartment would be part of a commercial building, I would imagine, in, in some respects, correct?
Yeah, no, I, I, when I read that, I just thought that, you know, we're not going to have any of those here.
Probably not.
Because it's very unlikely that, whatever they contemplated with the Aqua Fund program, that, you know, we're not going to have individual, first of all, we don't have many apartments. We certainly don't have any single apartments that are going to be subject to connection orders for the apartment by itself. So, that was how I resolved it.
Other than that, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, Dean, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks, Kathy and Jill. Just a couple of questions. So, it applies only to year-round residents?
Correct.
So, if you're a seasonal resident, you cannot apply for this grant money?
Correct.
Can we make that distinction? Is that, have you run this by town council yet?
Town Council and I have a call tomorrow afternoon. We weren't able to quite coordinate schedules quickly enough. He has reviewed it, and he does have a couple of questions. But again, using the Aqua Fund as kind of our basis determining document, the 0% and 2% loans are only applicable to year-round residents as well.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I just want, want to make sure we do it correctly. When you say under the eligibility criteria in Section 3, be the residential property owner of record, and a lot of properties are in trust.
and a lot of properties are in trusts or LLCs, we just want to make sure that they're eligible. The, I guess, I, I like the idea that, you know, we, we don't do our own qualification, it's done by the Aqua Fund. At the same time, the property owner is put in the position of having to get a loan first before they're eligible for a grant. And I just wondered if, you know, we have any, anybody has any concern about putting the, forcing the property owner to go out and get a loan first before they can get a grant from the town?
Well, I, I, they have to get, um, approved and, 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 and some sort of a certification that they are, um, entitled to have the loan. But I don't think there has to be any, uh, they don't have to have taken the money down.
I don't know how they do it in Orleans, I have no idea, but that would be the only.
Orleans had required that they had actually taken the loan out.
And maybe we want that, I don't know, I just threw it out.
Because that, that ensured that the work was going to be done. And that's why Orleans made it kind of a sticking point for the grant, to prove that, yes, I am committing to this new connection and.
I don't recall, how much are the loans, um, that they get? I, I thought that woman said that they could get the whole thing paid for by.
They, they can.
Could be five or six, $7,000.
They can, I think it was more the timing of the disbursement of their loan versus our grant. I think our grant would be, would be available to these recipients a little bit more timely, so they'd be able to apply it to, uh, the work that they're needing to apply it to.
I'm not, I'm not gonna press on that point, I just raised it. The final thing, uh, was on the application, and maybe you don't need this if, uh, well, maybe we do. We might want to add, um, that they provide proof of their year, their year-round residency on there. That's it. Otherwise, you know, I know this is the first read, but those are my comments and suggestions.
Thank you.
Corey?
Just a real quick one, because I know Shereen mentioned the apartment and the, on, but the condominium, I mean, do you have to put residential condominium? Because there are commercial condominiums. I mean, it's the, because you, because residential, I mean, no, sorry, commercial's not eligible.
Correct. So you'd like to see a distinction there for resident? Because it is, it would be residential, yes.
Right, I was wondering, just for clarity, if it's necessary, so.
Okay. I'll bring that up tomorrow as well.
I think the fact that, that funds are paid directly to the vendor is really, is a great idea, good idea, and I think it's very appropriate. And, you know, I think this is gonna take off, to be honest with you. I think it's very attractive. And I think having the Aqua Fund as a predecessor, precursor, you know, approval is, is a great control for us as well, so. Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I, I, that, I, I agree. I, I think this is, it's simple, it's easily administered, and it's, you know, it, it effectuates the, the purpose and intent that we had in mind. So I, 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 I'm, I think I would agree with Dean. We let this go to a second read, I, I think that was your implication. I would certainly agree with that. Maybe wait to see how the, um, you know, how town meeting treats the, the warrant article, but I think they have a pretty good idea now what, how this would operate. So.
Agreed.
I don't think we need any action. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job. Next case, uh, we have a committee appointment. Mr. Leo Eldridge, um, to the Airport Commission. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just ask a question? I, I, and I know we had some comment in the public comment section. And I, I like this candidate, and I'm prepared, if there's a vote tonight, I'm gonna vote for him. If there's a vote three weeks from now, I'm gonna vote for him. But I just wanted to, we have two openings, right? Because we received an email today from, from, from someone who.
Yes, I was not, I was a late recipient of Mr. Mike Galen's resignation. So he has resigned, um, effective April 1st. He has moved, apparently, so that does leave two seats, which is, I believe, what I indicated on this form, because I found out and it was confirmed.
And his, his, his position ran until what, 26th or the 28th?
One moment, and I can tell you. Mr. Galen's position ran through 2026.
Okay, and the other opening was from Mr. Schultz, who stepped down a while back.
Yes, so he had been removed from the list, but yes. And that seat was through June 30th, 2025, which is why I indicated a June 28th.
So my real question is, do we have any other applicants at the present time?
I can go back through, I don't recall seeing anyone I was prepping, because I will have, I've been kind of going through.
And nobody has submitted?
No, not that I'm aware of.
And the positions are posted, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So if we're to consider anybody, somebody has to apply. So, anyway, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I, there has been some modest recruiting effort on the part of the, um, the Airport Commission. And I, you know, I, I can't say of my own knowledge, there's nobody out there, but in terms of anybody that's had a conversation relative to the possibility of their serving, I, I would say there's nobody out there other than this gentleman. And he, by the way, is the product of, of some lengthy conversations, so.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to appoint Leo Eldridge as a member of the Airport Commission until June 30, 2028, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
Second.
Hold on a second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Thank you. Next case, Jill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Your town manager's monthly report.
Yes, so in your packet, we have the monthly report for March, as well as a few current items that I'll go over. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The first item is exciting news about our AAA bond rating being affirmed with a stable outlook. And so next week, you'll see the bond bids for the borrowing that Carrie, our finance director, is going to do. It's about $8.1 million. So I'm just really proud of the efforts of the finance team, both Carrie and Sharon, as well as the collaboration with Greg Berman from Natural Resources, and Katie Donovan from our community development, and Craig Rowe from our IT division. What they were able to contribute, really contributed to our affirmation of our bond rating. So it's not just about the finances, although they're very strong, our reserves are very strong, as noted in the S and P report, but it's also looking forward into the future. And so we have a great, stable outlook for that. And in the, in the packet has the full press release. And then just following up on the committee and board reappointments, we stuck it in the, the town manager's report about, um, some upcoming vacancies that we are aware of, and also the current listing of open seats. So that's in here, if anyone's interested to find out. And we just talked about the Airport Commission, and Kathy had noted that there's two open seats. So take a look at that. And then our, uh, Team Chatham celebrates Earth Week. We've had some really, um, great participation by team members who were guest speakers at various events and nonprofit cleanups. So I listed them here. There was a panel at the Orpheum that included Rob Failey, our Director of Public Works, along with Renee Gagny, our Shellfish Constable, and other community leaders on the environment. So that was really interesting. And then there's a third annual Big Blue Conference that was, I believe it was today, that Greg Berman had participated in that. So that's listed here of all their speaking engagements, and very proud of their expertise and their willingness to take it on the road for us. And their DPW Division is holding their open house events that are listed here for the various water treatment and Drinking Water Week coming up for this week. And then as usual, I've noted the employee years of service, looking forward for May. So we have, I think now our longest-serving employee is Dave Reddy, and he's a fire captain with 35 years, again, with the Fire Department. Bill Delane, he's also 25 years. And I just don't want to miss anybody here. We have Sarah, who's, Sarah Harris is 25 years as well. So a lot of longevity, including our DPW force. And quite a few new hires in the last year. Again, they're all working out really great with us, and so I've listed them. And then we have our new promotional, well, I'm sorry, let me back up. Police Officer Kenton Franklin has been, um, appointed and started the academy, and his introduction memo also went to the board. So I have a picture of him with the chief. And then Sergeant Bill Glover, who's retiring after, I think it's more than 40, 44 years of service. He didn't want anything, but I, I couldn't let it pass. So I wanted to note that appreciation to him for serving with the town since June 15th, 1981. And then with him retiring, we have our promotion of Sergeant Liz Thompson. Very excited for her, she's been with the town since July of 2019. And that's gonna happen this Thursday at Chatham PD at, I believe it's at 10 o'clock. And then recruitments and postings, we're doing pretty good as well. Just a couple of open positions that are available online. And then throughout the monthly report, Kathy's really great about indexing hot topics, so projects are always the case, and so she has them listed there with the page number. And then our Chatham TV Productions Must See TV has been doing a great job at helping us promote the annual town meeting, getting people there, as well as certain articles that they're highlighting. They did our preview show as well, it's a different format. So I'm looking forward to hear some feedback on that, where we did fewer articles and relied on some of the backstages and our digital companion, so that people can click and follow along. And the backstage shows are also shown on our local cable TV channel. And then the West Chatham Neighborhood Center Q and A, that's also a really great resource that talks about the Neighborhood Center, the two articles for town meeting on that. So, um, a lot of data, a lot of great outreach, our numbers are improving, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Oh, good. Terrific. Very comprehensive, thank you. And I, I'm not preempting anybody? Okay.
No, great report, as always.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, um, the next item on the, and last item on the agenda is the evaluation of the town manager. This is, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is your 13th full-year evaluation, is that right? We're in 14?
Moving into year 14.
Moving into 14, um, out of that unlucky 13th, but it turned out to be pretty lucky. The town manager, and I, I do want to say, particularly in light of some of the comments at the outset, this was a process, I don't recall exactly when it started, but my recollection is that I got the memo, as did the rest of us, starting the process, um, I don't know, three weeks ago, um, three, three or four weeks ago. And that started a process in which each individual select board member, fills out the evaluation sheet, makes comments, schedules a meeting with the town manager, has an individual conversation with the town manager, then finalizes that board member's, um, comments and, and, and evaluation, numbers, if you will, submits that to me, and, and, and get a compilation from the executive assistant, and it all landed on my, in final, on my desk yesterday. So, um, that, that, it, it's an elaborate, it's a, a very robust process. And I'm gonna try not to take too long to outline some of the things that I think are worthy of mention tonight. And I think then the, the, the memo, the final version, does go on the public record. So it, it will be available.
And on the town website.
And on the town website. So, um, let, let me say that as, as the memo indicates, there are six separate categories of evaluation. Number one is personal and professional. Number two is board support and, and board relations. Number three is financial management. Number four is personnel management and organizational leadership. Number five is community leadership and public relations. And number six is town operations and infrastructure. There are a total, under those six large headings, there are a total of 38 separate items that receive, um, a numerical evaluation according to a point system, which begins with one point for improvement needed, two points for satisfactory or acceptable, three points for strong performance, and four points for excellent or highly commendable. This year, the, um, the average of all of that was 3.72, which is an average of, of all of those 38, um, individual ratings from each of the five board members. Another way to think about that is that the 3.72 is 93% of a perfect score. So, uh, and, and last year, um, her, um, rating was 3.78. This year, it's 3.72. Statistically, those are virtually, virtually identical, and they both connote an extremely, um, strong, uh, literally a very close to a, an excellent, highly commendable, um, rating. I want to go through, I, I think the comments are worthy of mention. What I've done is I've tried to pick out at least one comment from each of the five board members, and in a couple of cases, I am gonna read two under a particular heading. And, um, in one case, um, I've, I've gone back and, uh, there, there's one board member whose comment will be read twice. The, the first one that I'm gonna read is under personal and professional. And it is as follows. "The town manager is top grade in all of these categories. With respect to item D, I have checked both boxes to indicate my view that sometimes her emphasis on process comes into conflict with her creative and inventive impetus. She is always top grade, however, where effective is concerned. In more general terms, she is a capable, experienced, commanding manager of everything that appears on the dashboard of her job responsibilities." The second category is, um, board support and board relations. And I'm gonna read one, uh, comment from another board member as follows. "Appears to have difficulty working with select board that is philosophically divided. Noticeable decline in keeping the members of the select board informed about events like swearing-in ceremonies of new FTEs, full-time employees, Citizen Police Academy graduation, and celebration events recognizing staff department achievements. Concerns about growing list of future agenda item requests dating back to 2018 that need to be scheduled for select board discussion." The third one is, um, financial management. And I'm gonna read, um, the comments from two board members on, under this category. The first one is "Financial direction continues to show superlative accomplishment by the town manager. Parent EG renewed AAA bond rating, effective management of the budgetary process together with the participation of the finance director." The second comment from another board member is as follows. "Jill's presentation, along with her staff, excel at providing a detailed report of our financial picture, and over the years, reports have become more comprehensive and thought-compelling." The next, uh, section is personnel management and organizational leadership. This is yet another board member's comment under that heading. "Jill has had a very good year with the remaking of her team. The hiring of Greg Berman and Rob Failey immediately improved the professionalism and dedication of her team. They are both results-oriented and extremely." They are both results-oriented and extremely well-received and respected in the community. The addition of Carrie Maserol is also a win as the shoes of Alex Halela were the big, were big ones to fill indeed. Shauna Neely is excelling in her new communications role. Megan Downey delivered four union contracts slash agreements and Katie Donovan has led multiple initiatives in the planning department. I do think that the director leadership level of Team Chatham is on a very good trajectory. I do hear on the street that morale and communications are issues and need more attention, and, and need more attention. Jill's plan for bringing Town Hall on the road for residents and employees alike may serve to quell some of this noise, at least in the year term, in the near term. Given the largesse of recent contractual agreements, I do think we have put the cries for increased and more competitive compensation to bed. Jill's creation of Team Chatham, her continued engagement of staff through informal meetings and her proven status in navigating and negotiating contrast, tracks exemplifies strong management and leadership." The next one I am going to, I'm also going to read, sorry, I'm going to read from another board member under community leadership, public relations. "Jill is active and visible in our community. She has maintained an excellent working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchant Association. She has presented at the Chatham Men's Club, S-Rac, and whenever and wherever she is asked to participate. She projects a positive image of our community. She prepares town meeting, educational videos, and masterminds backstage videos. She represents herself well and communicates the select board's goals, related plans, and accomplishments very well." The last section is town operations and infrastructure. And the last comment from a board member is as follows. "The digital budget book is innovative and helpful for the community to deep dive into the intricacies of our town's finances." And then the conclusion, which I wrote, says, "Jill's performance, as reflected in the written comments by the select board members above, with very few and very modest suggestions for improvement, exemplified her excellent performance, her professionalism, and her collaboration with all the town stakeholders. The comments and the scores reflect the overall consistent and exceptional discharge of Ms. Goldsmith's responsibilities as Chatham's town manager." So with that, I will open it to the board to make any other comments or whatever you want to say. Corey, go ahead.
I'll just make a very simple comment. I mean, we've done this process for, for, well, I've done it for quite a few years. You know, I've been around, I have my own perspective on things. I think we've all had an opportunity to sit down on one-on-one basis with the town manager and, and able to discuss and communicate our, our items that we're very supportive of and items that we may have issues with. So at least we have that communication element, which has been very important. You know, I think every year we try to build on that. There's no secret, there's certain issues I have some concerns over and, you know, each year we'll build on that. So hopefully we can take the evaluation, move forward. And I've also, you know, and I don't know how the other members feel about this. I'm not a big fan of this particular evaluation process. I think maybe there's a better system out there. I think we've been doing this system for quite some time. And I just suggest that maybe, and I've, I've spoken to town manager about this before, that there may be a better rating or evaluation system out there that might be considered moving forward. So I just want to put that out there because I think some of this is, the way it's interpreted, there's some gray areas that I, I have always felt uncomfortable with. So I think there could be a better process out there.
Okay, thank you. Dean, go ahead.
I would just say with respect to the process, I, I, I know Corey and I have tried it about this over the years and maybe I mentioned it to Jill. We should probably look to see whether these grade rankings might benefit if they had intermediate levels. So you don't just go from, you know, you're okay to your, to your excellent or, that's almost the way it reads right now, right? That's something I certainly would be willing to look at. I would just say that in terms of the overall estimate, I'm thrilled that in 10 years on this board that I've been, we haven't had to deal with getting a new town manager. If you look around other towns in the Cape, including today, next door, in the town of Harwich, you know, it's great to have stability and competent, very competent stability. So I'm, I'm very pleased with that. And that's my, my overall comment with it. Thank you.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I echo Dean's comments. There is something to be said for extremely competent stability and, you know, a steady hand on the tiller. I, I, you know, I emphasize the, the advances we made in IT as well in my comments. I'm struck where Chatham is with respect to its leveraging of IT versus other municipalities. We, in every single, almost every single department here, we are ahead of the game in, in leveraging IT. Sometimes it's not perfect, but we, we really get at it. And then the, the, the folks behind the, the window here, the video folks, Craig, the, the, the job the IT department does in Chatham, I think is phenomenal. So, and that's at Jill's insistence as well, Jill's leadership. So it kind of goes unheralded and I wanted to bring some, some light to it. Really do, really does a great job, really do a great job. Thanks.
I, I agree with everyone. I, I think when it comes to the hiring of, of staff in the last several years with such challenge for this, you know, the Cape community at large, to, to find qualified people, maintain them. And, you know, in, in a place where it's very hard to live is, has been a testament to your leadership and a better understanding of what, what, what we do need here to maintain a good staff. And I just, I think it's been a, a really interesting experience to watch and grow, you know, watch this whole, whole process grow. So really appreciative of that and your leadership.
I, I, I've already more or less indicated my comments, but I, I, this is a tough job. I, I, this is a very hard job and, and I, the degree of difficulty is way up there. And, and I, I think, you know, it, it's impossible to satisfy everybody. It's impossible to do everything every day exactly the way it ought to be done. It, it's difficult to work with where you have, you know, five people that you have to, in some way or another, keep happy, respond to, you know, execute on initiatives on behalf of. These are all things that I think really make that a very special, a, a job with a very special challenge. And I think you do a great job of it. And thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's always really awkward to sit here because there's so much that goes into an evaluation. It's not just the ratings and the comments. And, and one of the comments that I, I thought was really compelling to me related to the role of the town manager, where a lot of people don't know what a town manager does. But you see the outcome in, in, for instance, with me, with the new finance director, the new director of natural resources. And one of the comments, I don't have it here. It's, a member didn't realize how much work or how much credit I'm due as the town manager for those that I coach and counsel and really help get them to a point where we can carry out the board's directives. And so I really appreciate that comment because it's, so many town managers like myself are behind the scenes and we're not here for the credit. We're here to get the work done. So I really appreciated that. And so, but to my formal comments, I'm really grateful for your thoughtful and constructive feedback as part of my annual, annual evaluation. And as the chair said, the strong ratings, nearly 93% of the highest category are a reflection of not only my work, but of your policy direction and the great work of our incredible team that I have the privilege of leading. Much of what we do may not make headlines, but it makes our community functional, strong, and resilient. So I want to thank you to the board, to our staff, and to the community for your continued support. And it's an honor to serve as your town manager.
Thank you very much. It's a good note on which to invite.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:40. Good night, Chatham.